Ladies and gentlemen, if you will stand with me, we will start the Central Texas College Board of Trustees Workshop for eighteen April two thousand twenty-three. Invocation will be led by trustee Hollinger, the pledge of allegiance to the American flag by trustee Bibi, and I'll lead the pledge of Texas flag.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together to do your work. Help us understand what your plan is that exceeds our poor human understanding of what's happening. Watch after our first responders and all these families represented here today. Help us follow the path and forgive us and show us grace when we have fallen short of the plan. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me and honor the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We have a forum president today, and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may access this meeting through the Central Texas College website. Chairman's update is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or address topics of interest with a presentation limited to three minutes. Is anyone present like to address the board? Seeing none, give you one update on the tax income reinvestment zone, the TURERS number two. I went to the meeting last Monday, and there is a approval of the extension of the TURERS to the year two thousand forty-eight. That passed, and also, there was a presentation by the developers of the Anthem Park. Anthem Park is the area we sold several years ago, which is bounded by the airport, twenty-four seventy Martin Luther King Boulevard and Ransier. And that area is just west of the airport. And that is a mixed-use development, will be commercial and some high-density apartments and some storefronts with condominiums above them, that kind of community with some roads that will be going north and south between Stan Slater and Ransier. So that's under development, just so you'll know. I've got the complete packet here, and if anybody wants to take time to come and read it, I got it for you, no problem. And with that, we'll go to the chancellor's update.
I have nothing, sir, so move on to the agenda.
Move on to the agenda. Item number four is swearing in of Officer Figaro Hernandez. Officer Hernandez, you'll come forward.
Rapidly.
I know.
Officer Hernandez, you have any objection to swearing? Nope. Okay, then I will ask you to pledge your own. Repeat at me, I put your name.
I, Jonathan Figaro Hernandez.
Do so and swear.
Do so and swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
Central Texas College District.
Central Texas College District.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And with the best of my ability.
And with the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Promulgated by the CTC Board of Trustees.
Promulgated by the.
CTC Board of Trustees. So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you.
Officer, nobody knows what promulgated means.
He told me to research it, so I didn't.
We give my best notice, too. This is a word you're gonna wanna memorize.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That must be Rex's.
It's in Jersey.
I guess I got y'all confused. Did you already have one? Oh, he's got one, too? Okay.
Item number five on our agenda is the Career Technical Development Department update. Dr. Bart?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Last month, you heard an excellent update from Dr. Fisher on the academic programs in the college. And this month, we're happy to share an update on the career and technical programs at the college. So you will hear from seven departments, and I will wrap it up. So up first is Mr. Les Ledger, the department chair for Business Administration at All.
I wanna leave a sweet taste in your mouth, so. I've seen there are no calories in this. And you can believe a salesperson. Getting stretched, boss?
Did you make these?
Yes, sir. I slaved all day. Now, it looks like the packaging from the kitchen, but I did it all.
Okay.
Chocolate, sir. Chocolate, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. What I need.
Strawberries.
Strawberries.
Texas strawberries.
Texas strawberries. Love it.
They were blessed.
I don't know if I want to trust anything.
That's what my wife said.
Conference call special?
Absolutely, sir. There you are.
Thank you.
And for the beverage. Oh, there's some extras, but I have to turn those in. Okay, let's add the paralegal, homeland security, at all. Let's see. Logistics, I'll think of the other ones, real estate and marketing. Who turn, who switches these for me, please? Goodness. You expect me to do technology first? Okay, we take the cake. One of our greatest, no, all of our great departments are presented, but our culinary arts department did an excellent job at a recent competition where it beat, I'm sorry, y'all got me split on audience here, Austin Community College. I believe they have a little money.
Yes.
And so those are all the award winners. If you look on the far left, see if I can do this, it's Ms. Bellinger over here on the left, right there. She's first place in buttercream cake. They didn't let me taste that. Ms. Johnson over here, single tier, right there, there, all of our winners. Over here is our third, is our multi-tier wedding cake. And then Crystal, first place in a beginner. Over to the left, down here, Cassandra Shackelford, special techniques, all chocolate. You missed the tasting on that, folks. And then Lan Griffin, who does an excellent job for us, she's a former student. And then Kimberly Simmons, third place, multi-tiered cake. And then Chandra Autry, sculptured cake there. And here is the best news of all the winners. The overall winner of two thousand twenty-three in Round Rock was this lady. She's the overall winner of two thousand twenty-three. And then Jen Segola over here did small bites, and we won all of that. Now, one of the nice things about that department, we have raised gross dollars for the, for the college, Central Texas College, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, up to date.
Nice.
A little round of applause would be great. Thank you. And we did that all within budget. We're balanced. Another part of our organization is Net Impact, which is part of our internship. Right now, they're meeting on the eighteenth in the planetarium. The focus there is budgeting for beginners. Interesting fact, I'm sorry, I have a tendency to lapse into lectures. Sixty percent of America cannot write a check for four hundred dollars. They don't have that money. And so with the help of early college high school, we are taking, we are teaching all, I don't know that we're teaching, we're holding a class for everybody to learn about managing money. Our real estate program, one of our most popular programs, is all online. We accomplished that this semester, thanks to our leader on that. And her name is, tell me your name, Jim.
Angela Reese.
Angela Reese. Great, thanks. We have that taken care of, and we're revising an old degree. We had a choice of either canceling it or revamping it. In case you didn't know, they've revamped the hamburgers from McDonald's, the new hamburger. We now have a new degree, social media marketing. It's not really new, it's one that we've revamped. We're very fortunate, the professor we've hired for that happens to be our former PR person. We're glad to have her back with us. Any questions? Certainly there are none? Don't they do that in the Baptist church, we're gonna vote? Any questions? Are y'all just odd? I can go on, I'm good for an hour and twenty minutes.
Les, you missed the chance to start with the culinary arts and failing to invite people to the Patio Cafe.
Well, I was getting to that, and I've been practicing. I've been practicing on this. Okay. The, I'll talk to y'all, because y'all invited. It is open on Friday, and it happens to be Korean and Mexican food fusion. It's good. My father would say, tres comidas de mexicanas por dia nunca siempre, which means, in my Spanish, three meals in Mexican food is never enough. So please come, we're glad to have you. And thank you very much for helping us stamp out ignorance. It's a joyous event, we've got good students, and y'all do a great job for us. Thank you very much. I'm available for other events if you need me.
Thank you, Les.
Okay, thanks, Les.
Mine personally, didn't come out of budget. That's your welcome to use it.
Thank you.
Hello, Maria Lewis, Child Development.
Follow that.
Teacher education, follow that, right? I don't have sweets, and it's not turning.
It's the next one.
He gave me the pointer.
I gave her anything she wanted.
Okay.
Keep pushing, you're getting better.
There we are, Child Development, Teacher Education. Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that we did use a Carl W. Perkins grant, and we were able to send, we're going to send two teachers to attend the conscious discipline training, which is helping our teachers to regulate emotions with the children. Texas Workforce Commission funds allowed us to give seven hundred and fifty dollars to two, three of our teachers, and we also paid for a computer for our online manager, Dr. Laura. We've been involved in the community through Central Texas Community Resource Coalition. My assistant director and I went to Salado and talked to this organization. We are going to start sharing resources with them, collaborating with them. We allowed them to see what our college was all about, our programs, and so we're excited to see that there is about twelve organizations there that are nonprofit that we are going to be able to work with. We had middle school students visit us at the Child Development Center. They were in three groups, and so Teresa talked to them about child development and what that meant. The Week of the Young Child was last week, and our own Dean Bach did our proclamation this year. As you can see, her up in the right corner, Dr. Adie, read for our children. And then we also had the CTC band and choir play for the children. Staff, Mrs. Easter will be leaving us after retiring for twenty years. I know that having our students work for us is a, they're able to continue working, and so we had a work-study student, Sandra, who also is a teacher's aide, and she's moving up to Mrs. Easter's class, and will be teaching her class now. So she went from that position all the way up to teaching, which we like to see. Our teacher aide, Miss Ella, is gonna be moving away with her military husband, and so we have an opening there, and we also have two work-study students that are presently working with us. Thank you. Any questions?
You got it? Ah, good morning, and happy tax day. Smile. We were proud to say that, but he didn't say anything about it. I'm John Chella, department chair for both Protective Services and the Police Academy. We're up on top of the hill by the gymnasium. They told me I have two minutes to get up here and tell you all the facts about my department. Thank God I have a small department, so try to do that and keep that within the two minutes. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the two thousand twenty-three calendar year for my areas, and maybe you'll hear some good news and maybe you'll hear some bad news, because I always like to tell the truth. As you all know, I think most all of you know that we have four full-time academies in the Police Academy. Three of those are daytime, one of those is in the evening. When I first came to work here, there was one daytime academy and one nighttime academy. We have expanded that to four full-time, and they're designated Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta. So if you come up to talk to somebody up there, they're gonna tell you Alpha did something, Bravo did something. That's just how we designate the academies. So when the courses are taught, they are taught the same, same number of hours. The Night Academy is an extended BIPAC, extended BIPAC, and it runs for about eleven and a half months currently. That was originally designed to have independent students in it, that is non-sponsored, that did not work for a police agency. That has changed. We now have independent students and sponsored cadets together. So if they come from an agency, they can be in any of the four academies, to include the night one. So that's a change we have made. The academy is currently set at seven hundred and twenty hours. We offer, like I said, four, so we start in January, and we run through the end of the year, December. This time, for the first time, we're gonna run over the year. We're gonna run into two thousand twenty-four with the Night Academy because of the hours that have been added to the academy. So we have two academies in session right now. We have the Night Academy, and we have the first daytime academy that started in January. We added, we started a second daytime academy yesterday, and we have twenty-six students in that class. The interest in the academy has increased tremendously. When we had, took applications for the second and third academies, we had over forty applicants for those. We limit our enrollment currently to twenty-five, and that is at the recommendation of our advisory board. And there's a lot of reasons why we do that. One is that there's a safety issue when we go to the range, when we do driving, when we do things like that. Twenty-five is a better number than forty when you're at the firing range. I mean, you've been to the range, so you know what that's about. The pandemic is over, I hope, so we have interest, and we are starting to fill those academies up. Another reason for that is pay has gone up tremendously. If you've looked at police officer salaries, when I was a police officer, I made nine hundred and thirty-two dollars a month. Today, police officers are starting at fifty-five or sixty thousand dollars. Many police officers in their career could make six figures, so big change in the economics of that. You see, if you look in the paper, if you see the flyers that come out to the college about hiring, many police departments now pay sign-on bonuses. I think they're up to ten thousand dollars for a sign-on bonus for a police officer. Crime rates are up, and the anti-police movement is down. So those are all positive things as far as our enrollment scale. The higher enrollment numbers that we are looking at, and like I said, we had two classes with, that had over forty applicants. We took twenty-five or twenty-six of those to attend the academy. Presents a challenge to us in, in the area of safety, but also in the area of space availability in our building up there and the number of faculty we have. We currently have Cliff Osborne, who is the director of the Police Academy. I think he was up here and talked to you in December of last year. And he has two full-time faculty members, and they teach four academies. If you come up there, we're basically open from seven-thirty in the morning until ten o'clock at night. We, you'll see students up there on the evening and on the weekend as well. If you're on the campus, you'll hear them at the range on Saturdays or Sundays or both. So we're always up there. So we have three academies running right now with the addition of the one yesterday. The final one, Delta class, will begin in June, and that will run through December. And we already have fourteen applicants for that, so we expect to fill that class up with twenty-five plus when it gets to that time. And I want to point out one thing, we are not supported by any large cities here. I know some of you live in Colleen, you think that's a big city, but it's big for crime, it's not big for much of anything else. But we don't have Austin, Houston, or Dallas to support us. And before I came up here this morning, I looked at the enrollments and where those students came from. And beside the local law enforcement agencies, we have like Bell County SO and Copperscope PD. Those are probably the two largest providers of students that we have. We also have students from Brown County, Brownwood PD, Burnett PD, Burnett County SO, Lampasses County SO, Lampasses PD, Gaseville PD, Corial County SO, Leander PD, Lano County Sheriff's Department, Marble Falls PD, Fort Hood PD, Leander PD, Taylor PD, our fellow college down the road, T A, TAMCT PD. And we actually even have three students from Coleman, Texas. Anybody know where Coleman is? Oh, my God, thank God. I lived in, I lived in Texas for forty-eight years. I had no idea where Coleman, Texas is. It's in Coleman County.
Near Brown County.
Near Brown County, that's right. So we've reached out to Brown County, the word's getting out there, we're now coming from Coleman County. Takes them two hours to drive here and two hours to drive back home. Thank God they don't do it every night. They stay in our dormitory over here, and that's their home for the next couple of months. You know what the motto of Coleman is? The friendliest city in Texas. And I hope we're adding to that by sending them some good police officers that will pass that along when they are writing tickets. So we have students from all over, and we tend to cater to those small agencies. And, you know, I'm kind of happy that we do that. We are a community college, and we take care of the communities, even if they're not right here in our backyard. The graduations are coming up, and I welcome all of you to come to our graduations. I know our students like that, the cadets comment on it, they like the support they get from the college. And they will start July seventh, will be the first one for this year. September twenty-second will be the Charlie class graduation. Delta class will graduate on December the eighth, and then the Night Academy will have to graduate next year, January two thousand twenty-four, because of the length of time it is. If you would like to come and observe a class, feel free to come up there anytime. Like I said, we're open from seven-thirty till ten o'clock at night. If you wanna do some hands-on, we do a driving course. Some of our administrators have ridden in police cars with very untrained police officers at that time, and scares them to death. You can come to the range. Everybody likes to shoot. We have defensive tactics. Oh, there you go. There's the pictures on there. Dr. Bach helped me pick those out, because I was gonna have a video of the cadets being pepper sprayed, but they cry a lot, and they yell out for their mothers. And I didn't wanna present our academy in that light, so. This is no video, no video and no sound. Safer that way. If you would like to volunteer for pepper spray, come on, we cannot find enough volunteers to get pepper sprayed. So we might even give you a cold beer after that, if you will do that. There was one point I would like to make, and I know if I'm over two minutes, just hook me and get me out of here. Part of our training, and I give credit to and I thank Perkins for providing grant money, and I know you're all aware of the grants that we get from Perkins. We are in the process of transitioning from shotgun training, which is an old police practice, to training with the patrol rifles. Now, that's a, to make it simple, it's like an assault rifle, it's a military caliber, five-point-five-six-two-two-three. That's what most of the police departments are going to. So Perkins was kind enough to purchase, or repurchase with their money, fifteen patrol rifles with scopes and twenty thousand rounds of ammunition. So you'll hear that training going on out here. Don't get scared. The red flag is up. If you see the red flag, you don't need to get under the desk. See the flag, you know we're out there. So we're always appreciative of Perkins funding that we get. The other half of my department is the degree program, and I really don't have a whole lot to tell you about that, other than we are still seeing an impact from the pandemic. We currently offer only two face-to-face classes, that is in the classroom. All the other instruction that we do is online. I don't have any enrollment numbers for the summer of two thousand twenty-three yet, but I have scheduled additional face-to-face classes for the summer. They may or may not make, I can't guarantee that. We always had students that liked to do face-to-face, we had students that liked to do online training. I thought they were never mixed. When we had the pandemic and everybody was forced to go home and do their courses online, guess what? They liked it. They did classes in the middle of the night, they drank beer, they wore pajamas and slippers to come to class. And they did that, and if they were really not ready for class, they'd just turn their camera off, and we didn't know what they were wearing. Maybe they didn't wanna know. So we've seen a change in the demographic, I think, of the students. The ones that were diehard face-to-face students have now kind of got used to being online. We do have Saving Grace, and that is in the ECHS, the Early College. I always wanna call them early child. They're not, they're not, they're young children, but they're early college high school students. And we do offer classes that they take, and we have, seems more and more interest. Many have expressed interest in taking more classes in CJ, so we are expanding our program. And we're gonna try to get more classes that they can take and fill their load at the high school level and at the college level. So that's something we're working on currently. So anybody have any questions? I did not bring cookies, candies, or whatever else that was that Les was giving out, so all I can do is answer questions.
John, do you still have the DFW folks coming down here?
Uh, good question. We, we had one last year, and currently, this year, we do not have any. Can't tell you why, I mean, I can't give you a reason why either or, but.
How many non-sponsored students do you have in any particular class? Is it like two or three, or is it ten, or? Because they have to pay for themselves, and that.
Yes, the non-sponsored pay, full tuition, they pay it for themselves, or they get TA money or military or financial aid. We keep that separate on our board, and I can see the board in my head, I just can't tell you what that number is.
Not a large number, probably. It's not large.
Well, if we take, if we take the average number of twenty-five, I would guess maybe, maybe a fourth of that.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not large. Yes?
You indicated that we had more applicants for the academy than we could accommodate. And so that caused me to think, okay, maybe we need more whatever in order to. And so that caused me to think, okay, maybe we need more whatever in order to, to accommodate the additional possible workload. And, and then you gave some reasons why we don't have the extra space. So I guess my question to you is, do you think it'd be worth our effort to try to do all, overcome these handicap situations in order to get more classes?
I, I think we're limited by the facility that we have and we are certainly limited by the faculty, the number of faculty that we have. Mr. Harmson has been helpful in redesigning the building that we have up there. And currently we have a classroom that has a capacity of a hundred and eight students. That's a big classroom you see in the picture right there. Okay, it's a great multi-use room. You see it being used as a gym right now. We get, we, then at the end of the evening, we pick up all the mats and we put all the desks back in there. The next morning, it's a classroom again and we're constantly, you know, changing the purpose of that room. So in the new design, which is in place right now, we're going to divide that room in half with a portable accordion wall. And that will divide it into two rooms of around fifty students per side. So we'll get an additional classroom out of that. Doesn't make our building any larger, just makes the configuration better for teaching. When we need that big space again, we could open that wall up, put all the mats down and they can use it for a gym. Now, we do have a building out behind our, we have a barn, or what we call a barn, out behind our building. So we are looking at, at a plan to either heat and air, air condition that space. It's just a big shell of a barn with a garage door on each end. We do physical training out there, defensive tactics. We normally do that when the weather is good. So we can accommodate that a little better and put insulation in there, put heating and air conditioning in there. We could use that more months out of the year. So that, that will help us when that gets done as well. But as far as the building goes, the footprint is only as big as it is.
You indicated we lack of instructors, I think, and in our aviation program, I think they have a difficulty in, in attracting instructors for that. Would we be able to attract instructors for the Police Academy?
Oh, without a doubt. I have several that teach for me as adjuncts. They're all retired police officers. And we only hire retired federal agents or police officers or probation officers, depending on what specialization they teach. And there are people available to do that, yes.
Good. Thank you, sir. Good, good presentation.
To make one other point.
Sure.
And I don't want to get fired. We have more potential than a Police Academy. Now occasionally we'll teach a county corrections course. That is the county jailers. And we have a need, a dire need to teach telecommunicators. That is dispatchers, nine-one-one dispatchers, nine-one-one personnel. And I do have staff that can teach that. But again, when we have four academies in the building, we're going to teach it in a closet or in a computer lab. There's really no place to teach those classes. And then we come under some guidance and rules by T. Cole about where we can teach that. They want designated classrooms for the academies. Have to be a place that we don't share with anybody else. So T. Cole, the Commissioning Board for Texas, certainly has a say in what we do and how we run the academies. So they oversee, they provide oversight for everything we do.
Good. Thank you, sir. It, it appears as if we just need a lot of money to build some more buildings.
I would, I would settle for an addition. I'll take an addition on the building. But the, there is potential for growth there, yes. And I want to be honest about that.
Yes, sir.
We do have potential for more training there. We could also, if we take it further than that, we could do in-service training, which we could provide to all the police departments in the area where they would come and take. Every police officer is required to have certain number of hours every two years to maintain their license. We could certainly teach those classes here as well.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you for inviting me. Hope to see some of you at the graduation and like I said, you're welcome anytime to come up there and participate in any of those. Pick your own event. We'll do like the Olympics. Pick what you want to do. Thank you.
It's good to see you again. So of course I bring all good news. It's been a pretty busy year for me. As a new department chair, we've been implementing a lot of changes and I think that we're starting to see good, good up trending performance on the program in the past couple of months. So one of the main things is that in total, we have outperformed the past three years. As a matter of fact, the past four years in the amount of certificates and ratings that we have been able to, or the students have been able to obtain. As a matter of fact, we've probably seen the pilot examiner more often. I've probably seen my wife every day. He almost, I've been telling him that, hey, if you want to have a, a room over here so you can stay, because we have so many exams. As a matter of fact, I've been, because one of the things that we do is in-house exams before we send them out to the pilot examiner. And I've been extremely, extremely busy myself doing those as well with Mr. Reynolds and Killian. So far, doing pretty good. Our total passing rate for the whole program, and this is again for FAA examinations, is above eighty percent. So that is extremely good. This is what they're asking for. And we have, of course, graduations that, it's been a little bit up and down. Again, pandemic has been an influence on this before. But we have seen an increase of enrollments in the other courses. We had a good amount of enrollments in the past on the initial course and the first semester courses. Not so much on the other courses that we had in the program. Now we're seeing a more equal balance. We are, I think, at fifteen on the second semester course. We're seeing now the graduations of people finishing their last flight course starting to, to come out. So in the past summer semester of twenty-twenty-three, we had one. Moving to the fall, we had, I believe, two students graduating. Spring semester, we're looking at three students at the least. And between the summer and the fall, we're looking at fifteen. So again, we're trending up. We also have a waiting list. We have eighteen prospective students that are waiting and have been waiting for some time now to be able to get into the program. Some limitations that we have again is because we're not a traditional classroom class. We also have limitations because of the number of airplanes that we have for the specific courses. So we have to ensure that these students have enough, that the instructors have enough time for the students when we allow them to come in, to be able to progress and to have the attention that they deserve. So starting somewhere at the end of the fall, between summer and the fall semester, we're going to start seeing new students roll into the program again. We're always kind of working to find ways to expand the fleet, to allow the program to continue to grow and to cope with the enrollment demand because certainly the industry is in dire need of more pilots. And we're, we're trying to supply that. In the last meeting that we talked about with our advisory committee, it's all members alumni that are now airline professionals in anything between Delta, Frontier, Spirit, even some cargo airlines. And they'll have expressed that even though, of course, they need a lot of pilots, they want us to focus in quality, which I do agree. And I think that's something that we are gonna give ourselves a good name of instead of just, you know, pushing pilots as fast as we can. Now, of course, the new airplanes, we talked about this before and the contract has been signed. The first payment has been released, so there's no delays on our delivery time so far. Just spoke today with the vendor. There, again, so there's no delays. It's expected to be September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. And we're also working on the travel plans to pick up the airplanes because the delivery is going to be in Miami. So we're supposed to pick them up there, bring them over here. The, one of the things that we have changed and we have noticed a lot more is that the students are enjoying to fly with us. So we noticed students from our program starting to recommend the program to other students from other colleges in the area. So, which is really good thing to see comparing for the past couple of years. And I really like to see that the students are more engaged with the program, that they feel that they're part of the program and they're proud of being part of it as well. The other thing is, of course, the three-ten has been the important topic in the past couple of years. And the three-ten is almost completed, so the engine isn't actually mounted. We contracted a specific mechanic to take care of that airplane because again, we still deal with our current operations and all the heavy operations, operations that we have and our mechanics are busy with that. So we contracted to have that person just focus on that airplane and get it as quick as we can, ready to fly. We also intend, intend to sell the Cessna one-fifty-twos as soon as we get the new airplanes. So we can start using new ones and allow the, the other ones to be sold. So. I think, of course, that one of the things that we are looking at is to expand in the future. Of course, we, we have our heads to think about what we're gonna do in the next couple of years. We want to continue to expand the number of enrollments, the number of airplanes that we have, of course, mechanics. And it's kind of like stepping up little by little. And that's where we're gonna be at. And of course, all of this is thanks to the staff that we have. I mean, the dedication, the passion, knowledge, and of course, the attitude that they have presented in the past couple of months is the reason why we're heading in this direction. We have, I think, and I'm very proud of, been able to create a welcoming and friendly professional environment that is able to deliver results. And that's what we're trying to focus on. I was talking a little bit fast, but if you have any questions for me, I'm very happy to answer those for you.
Hey, I got a question. On the eighty percent completion, do you think, do you think that the motivation on the students by getting them closer to, to graduating or completing their certificates, in other words, get it down to work, should be two years, two and a half years? And those new airplanes, will you think that will increase that eighty percent or is that?
Yes.
What is, what is the standard, what is Texas Silicon like right now?
So the FAA requires, we, they, they do an analysis when a school is started and they say that when you start, you want to start with at least that eighty percent. So we're able to maintain above that eighty percent at the moment. And we're striving to elevate that to ninety percent because again, we're looking for excellence. We're not looking for just, hey, we're at the bottom, we're, we're fine or, or some, we don't want to be complacent, right? And the new airplanes are gonna help us, of course, motivate, is gonna attract the students to make them feel like maybe the college is really investing on, on the quality of education for, for them because the airplanes are gonna be flying in the future are gonna be heavily technology-based. And of course, the airplane availability is going to increase because now these airplanes are not gonna require as much maintenance as the current ones does. You know, the one-fifty-twos go down. We have sometimes that the mechanics are able to completely take care of all the, what we call squacks or the, the write downs on the airplanes and the, the next day is like two airplanes are done. So we, we want to have less airplanes in maintenance and more airplanes flying.
You mentioned, last time we talked, you mentioned a program with KISD possibly and with the Air Force Academy.
So, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Those were the two.
KIZ, I did meet with Nancy Patterson. Yes, thank you. And we talked about what possibilities we have. We talked about perhaps some early college, high, high school program. And we think that one of the best way to reach out to the students who are interested in the aviation program is through, in this case, we came up with an idea of a summer course and it's already in progress. It's gonna start this summer. We're gonna start again small to, to see how things go. I gave her basically the plan for twenty students. She's going to be doing like a little survey to identify how many students within KISD are gonna be interested. We also do that similar plan with Temple ISD and we intend to expand to the other ISDs in the area. We also want to participate more in the recruiting events over at KISD. Be more present, having our table there with them and to show that we do have an aviation program because it's not common to hear that there's an aviation program as part of the community college. And I think that's why it makes us unique. But when I put ourselves out there a little bit more and with the Air Force, it's a similar project with, in the summer, to have the Air Force sponsored civilian students who are around that same age. And the intent is to train them, to hopefully allow them to solo. And these students have a GPA requirement to be able to participate in that program. So that ensures that these are students who will very likely join the industry.
Any other questions?
No, sir. You, you did a good job of covering the waterfront, as I say. And I was particularly interested in, in getting the information out to the high schools. And you covered that well. So let's continue that, please.
For sure. We can, I think we have a very good potential to expand. I've come from, I've come from Mexico City. I think I can even expand further. So I have, I, I do have friends in local airports over there and I mean, I came from there. So there's a reason why I'm here, right? And I'm pretty sure there is more people that would be interested equally in a program like this.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Doctor Sam Rupa.
Hi, good afternoon. Since I presented last month, I was asked to come and just share what we've been up to since last month. And so a few things. So the department has partnered with Career Services and we had a very nice department job fair. We brought entities in so that we could employ our students. As you know, we, that's one of the things we have to track in our department is not only if they pass their certification exams, but also do we get them employed? Are they employed? And that's real important for our statistics. And so bringing in a job fair was fantastic. A lot of contacts were made and a lot of entities were here. We also had our students volunteer with the Region Twelve Area Special Olympics. That was wonderful. The students have to, they have to engage with special populations. And this gives us that opportunity for them to engage in special populations and help out the community. That event was in Colleen at the new high school, the Chaparral High School. And it was a great success to have our students there volunteering and helping out the Special Olympics. The massage therapy students gave out massages at the Tamu CT Wellness Fair. They were loved by many. And so that was a great success. And then we also had the CTC Wellness Fair that our teammates here at Risk Management put together, which was fantastic. And our EMS and massage therapy students participated in that wellness fair. And so our massage students did hand massages. I happened to be a recipient of that and it was wonderful. And then the EMS students demonstrated CPR techniques and I did not participate in that one. The other thing was I had the opportunity to present some research at the Psi Beta National Honor Psychology Symposium. That was great because I was able to speak to not only early college high school students, but other professionals in the industry and in the honor society. We hosted a Carter blood drive recently, this past week. It was a great success. We had lots of students participate and then employees that were there in the building also were able to donate blood. I have a unique opportunity. This, I've not been asked before, but they have asked me to, an early college high school student called me and asked if I would be a part of her presentation, part of her project on first aid. And I am happy to do that. I'm excited to do that. So I'll be in the classroom presenting first aid with her. And so she's pretty excited too. So I'm looking forward to that event. I will be serving on the SOAR faculty panel, which stands for Successful Outcomes Through Academic Resources. That'll be placed by Dr. Garrett's office. And so I'm looking forward to being able to represent there in the faculty panel and answer student questions and hopefully steer them in the right direction to be successful, whether it's here at the college or in our department. And then exciting news, our paramedic program, I shared with you last time, the nursing program. This, the paramedic program has a one-hundred percent pass rate. The past two cohorts have had a hundred percent pass rate. And you can see there that the Texas state average is eighty-two percent. So the paramedic program is exceeding those national averages and we're, we're really just excited about that.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Are there any questions about some of the things? There's some of the pictures. I thought I'd bring you some pictures so you can kind of see the blood drive. There I was presenting at the symposium, our massage therapy students, our wellness fairs. There's my hand massage. There's proof. And then our students had volunteer shirts and they were on the medical teams and volunteering at Special Olympics. Any questions, sir?
Well, just a statement. You know, my, my daughter graduated from Yales and she, she passed national certi- Well, just a statement. Uh, you know, my my daughter graduated from Yales, and she's, she passed national certification.
Yay!
And then she works for Austin Travis County.
Yes, sir.
EMS. She is intent to come into our college to go back to paramedic school, and I'll pass those stats on to her.
Please do. Please do.
She enjoys doing it. She really does enjoy doing it.
And you know, it's not for everybody, but those that do wanna do it, it's certainly a a welcoming approach to come back to a program that you're used to and you're used to the faculty. So um, so I'm happy that she wants to come back. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Sam Rupa.
All right, thank you. Oh, sir.
I think we touched on this previously, but uh the fact that we have a shortage of nurses across the nation, and we, Mr. Unoplas pointed out the fact that we're really full, up to the brim, as far as being able to accommodate additional people. Am I correct there? Is there any way to to, for us to get people more interested in becoming a nurse? In other words, a caregiver, I think, is not a fully uh uh trained nurse or necessarily, and but there's a lot of uh need for caregivers. I- is there any way to develop that where that some of those people could uh migrate into the nursing program?
Yes, sir. Um, last month, I I had the opportunity to share a a program called MEAPS Program. It's the Multiple Entry Exit Program for Nursing. Um, so we're looking at taking those that are certified in healthcare and or CMA, CNA, those lower certifications for healthcare, and being able to bridge them into a program that takes them through all the levels and accelerates them through LVN and ADN, coming in at multiple points and exiting at certain points, because as of right now, they're not eligible to come in uh with any of those credits, the CMA, CNA, uh healthcare provider, all of those, they would be starting uh day one versus us being able to take what they've done and incorporate it into a MEAPS program. So we are looking at developing that. Um, I don't have a timeline for you as to when that's done, but we certainly are looking at that program. Um, a couple of the colleges here in in Texas have started that program, so we're kind of watching and waiting to see the success of those programs. But um we are looking at a MEAPS program. Yes.
As some philosopher said a long time ago, uh trip of a thousand miles has to have the first step, so thank you, I'm glad you're uh pursuing that.
We we are looking at that because of the the shortages, and the the shortages are expected to get worse, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. Thank you.
Dr. Bach has a big department. So just so you all know, there's lots of people, lots of.
All right, so I'm Eva Hearn, and I'm the Medical Programs Coordinator for our Office Technology Department, and I just have a few things to share with you that we're doing now, so. The first thing has to do with our Medical Coding and Billing Program. Those students, they have to pass a certification exam in order to be employed, in order to do that job, and so um we've been working with the AAPC, which stands for the American Academy of Professional Coders. They're one of the organizations that offers a certification exam for coders. And it's the exam that our students, most of the students who take the exams now, that's the exam that they take. So we're gonna be um helping our students, or offering discounts for our students to take the exam, as well as to give reference materials for studying and membership into that organization. And so that's gonna save them a good amount of money. In order to take the exam, it'll cost the students about a thousand dollars. And with the savings that we were able to negotiate with this um with this entity, they'll save about five hundred dollars. And so we're hoping that that will um increase the likelihood of our students certifying, because a lot of students, that thousand dollars is like the barrier between them being certified and eventually being employed in the area. And also, um with giving this, or with us getting this discount, it will also allow us to be able to track our students better, to see how they're doing on the exam, and not only just to see if they're passing, but also to see areas for improvement so that we can tailor our curriculum to to help in those areas and see where we need to kind of beef up our curriculum and where we're doing good. So we're excited about that. And then one other thing is that we have a double R robot, which is a way for our remote instructors, our instructor that's not physically in the classroom at that time, to be able to um communicate with our students. So it's a robot that we were able to purchase through Perkins Funds, and um a ro- a professor can remotely log into this robot, they can control the robot from their computer or their mobile device. They can see the students, the students can see them, they can see what the student is doing on the computer screen. It's like they're physically there without being there with the students. So um we're still testing it and learning how to use it, um but we're getting better at using it, and our students are excited to be able to use this once we we figure out how to use it. So yeah, we're excited about that, so that's all I have for you today. Does anybody have any questions for me?
You might uh talk to Ms. Patson, she may have a program that might help some of those students uh get that exam paid for. So.
Okay.
You might do that.
All right.
And I think, uh, Dr. Ate, we were looking at robotics program down the road, maybe in coding or doing some things maybe next year.
We have a robotics program, it's not part of the presentation, but it's also a doctor.
I guess I was talking about the the uh transition assistant program, using robotics.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Right now, we do have a robotics program, and we do use it also. We have students in it, and we also have um partnership with Copper's Cove students.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I am not Dr. Osir. Dr. Osir is not able to be here, but she did ask me to share a couple of facts with you about the um Computer and Information Technology Department. These are some of the ongoing projects that they have going in the department, one of which is micro credentials. Um, it is also known as badging. And so they are developing micro credentials that are act as badges, and they are awarded to students when they complete specific project milestones. Um, this is so that they can motivate students um to get um a sense of recognition when they receive a badge, um and it validates their effort and their hard work. The idea is to get them to excel in their studies. Um, the second reason is that it's tangible proof of the skills that the students have gained, and that the students can share those by social media, um digital platforms, and also show them to potential employers. The second thing that is going on is um um these esports and cy- cyber range research. Um, we had considered an esports program, and if you're not familiar with esports, esports stands for electronic sports, and it's competitive video gaming, um often in a professional setting. And so players compete against each other um in organized tournaments. And so when we looked at this and researched it, we found that uh between the curriculum issues and the costs of the high-level computers that are involved in order to run esports, it did not seem feasible. However, in conversations with the advisory committee, the department found out that cybersecurity training could be used as sort of an esports competitive-style activity, and so they're looking at building on that. Um, certainly cybersecurity's in the news all the time, um esports are in the news, so it seems like a good combination. So they're looking at something called US Cyber Range, which is a system of simulated attacks. Um, and they occur in real time, and so students are able to operate um with their cy- cybersecurity practical experience and deal with threats, um and that prepares them for the challenges of the cybersecurity field that which we know all too much after December. So the last thing she asked me to share is about college for kids. Um, this June, the Computer Information Technology Department will be hosting college for kids, uh participating in coding activities and also in robotics. You mentioned that just a minute ago. And the last thing is something I would like to share with you, since we're talking about computers. You've probably heard a lot of the news lately about ChatGPT. Have you read about artificial intelligence and and how it is becoming more prevalent in our society? You may have heard about ChatGPT, or Google Bard, or Dolly Two. And these are all genitive, generative, pre-trained transformers. And what that means is, um, when you think of transformer, we think of the word transformative. That's not what this is. This is a neural network that can determine context and meaning as well as engaged in self-supervised learning. It teaches itself. So if you happen to see Sixty Minutes on Sunday night, Dr. Fisher actually told me about Sixty Minutes, and so I looked at the episode. If you haven't seen it yet, it's a good watch, and it will prepare you for what's coming ahead. So we started talking about ChatGPT about two months ago. Um, it started with a a conversation with the department chairs and with the faculty. We were looking at it in terms of cheating and plagiarism, because right now, you can use ChatGPT to go out and ask to write your history paper on any topic. And it may or may not be right, but it gets you a really good start. So our fear was, how are we ever gonna stop this? You know, it's hard enough to catch cheaters now. How easy is it gonna be when it's done by artificial intelligence? So we've been talking about this and having conversations and decided there are really kind of three things we could do. We could say artificial intelligence outlawed, sort of consider it cheating or plagiarism. Um, we can encourage students to use it so they could develop their skills with it. And so as we were talking about this with the faculty, all of this has been developing in the meantime. So two months ago, we started the conversation. Last Friday, Dr. Fisher, Matt Lyles, some of the faculty and I attended a workshop on ChatGPT. And this is how far it's come since two months ago. So I asked it for ten names, so I came up with a project that I wanted it to develop for me. I chose something that nobody's ever done before, so that it couldn't just search the internet for it. So I asked it for ten names for a company in Cannon Beach, Oregon, where they would run a beach trolley service, so a trolley running up and down the beach, pulled by eight Samoyed dogs. I thought, well, nobody's ever done that before, so good luck to you. And it came up immediately with these ten names. Snowy Beach Trolley, Samoyed Sunset Tour. So the one I like is number seven, Seaside Sled Ride. So I thought, well, that sounds kind of fun for my fictitious company. So the next thing I asked it was to write me a business plan. And in three seconds, I had a beautiful business plan for my seaside sled trolley service for Cannon Beach, Oregon. It came up with figures, it told me how many dogs I'd need, it said I was gonna need about five hundred thousand dollars to invest, so if any of you would like to invest in this, I'm I'll meet you after the meeting. Told me how much I needed to spend on dog food, the whole bit. This is literally within seconds. So this is the part that really blows my mind. This, the next, this is all through ChatGPT. This next one is from Dolly Two, which is an image generator. So I asked it to give me pictures of Samoyed dogs on Cannon Beach pulling a trolley. You'll see in the left photo, it didn't do so well. It sort of got like cyclops, cyclops llamas instead of Samoyed dogs. What? So you can see that's also not a beach, so it's still struggling a little bit. But the photos on the right, it got Samoyed dogs right, it got the beach right, it got Cannon Beach, Oregon right, so it did pretty well there. They're missing six Samoyeds, but still pretty good. And again, this took literally a second or two. So then I got, it got better. So I skipped the beach part and just asked it for dogs. These are not real dogs. This generated these pictures of dogs by itself, and if if we were to zoom in, you'd see that the faces are kind of deformed a little bit. It looked like devil dogs in a couple of instances, and it didn't get it. But this is how good this is. This is what we're coming to. So this is something that we're gonna have to think about. How are we going to use this to teach? How are we going to manage students who have access to all of this? And I encourage all of you to go check out this, these artificial intelligence. ChatGPT is free, Dolly is a minimal charge, and um Google's Bard, you can now sign up, and it'll give you access within an hour. Go out and have a conversation with it. Ask it about the meaning of life, ask it to write something for you. It's wonderful. So in thinking about teaching, I thought, well, I'll ask it about, first I asked it for a list of how can we use artificial intelligence in the classroom. And it gave me a wonderful list, and I thought, well, I don't wanna give you a wonderful list to close this, so I asked it to write a haiku on the future of AI and higher ed. AI in class, creating new ways to teach, the future is bright. And what I love about that is it doesn't say anything about students cheating or plagiarism. It focuses on, this is a tool for teaching. That's something to really think about. I encourage you all to check out AI. So any questions?
Just an observation, I tried this uh for a sermon. I got a response. I gave the topic, and wanted to see if any verses of scripture were applied. I got a ask God response.
Really?
Thank you, thank you.
Wow, you think that was God saying that?
This was artificial intelligence.
Thank you all very much.
I was saving this AI thing, cuz I don't understand it. But uh since you wrote the subject, I've got to ask it this way. The way I understand it, uh that it's going to envelop every walk of life, every job, so is there any way that we should or could get this message out to, for instance, the high school students? So that, so that uh we could attract more students, more enrollment, and teach this in an environment that would cause our uh college to grow in
That's a great point.
population.
Don, it's the high school students will be teaching you about that. They already know them.
Yeah, oh yeah, cuz I don't understand it and don't want to. I'm too old. But uh I I do think that we ought to think of a way to attract the, and make them aware that this is here today, and that we can grow our population.
Absolutely, you're, and you're right. It's gonna affect every job, every walk of life. Um, there, you know, if you watch the Sixty Minutes episode, they'll tell you about how radiologists will use it in just a few years for for determining which are the most urgent cases to look at, that surgeons will be using it. I'm sure we'll be using it in classrooms. It's, the field is wide open right now, and you're right, and that's something I will look at. You're absolutely right.
Good, thank you. I I was thinking selfishly for uh CTC that if we could get started on this before the others think of having a an expanding program, it it would help us. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Item number six is the mission, vision, values, and strategic plan for AY twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight. Dr. Garrett?
Thank you very much. As we're talking about the future, we're talking about the future of CTC, our strategic plan for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-eight academic year. Um, a couple meetings ago, I presented to you and explained that we were undergoing a review of our current mission, vision, strategic plan, and values um with a large group on campus. Um, we've evaluated it, and we're coming before you right now to present the new mission, vision, values, strategic plan, and goals. The last um reevaluation I presented to you was for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-three. Now, as you see, it's time to move on. Our academic year twenty-twenty-three will be coming to a close, and the new academic year, mission, vision, strategic plan, so on, will take effect. We had five teams, one for each of the priorities. Fifty-six employees participated in this, and we had four students participate. Very excited to to um have them. They brought great, very, very bright ideas to the the teams. The teams reevaluated and recommended new strategic priorities and goals. Um, but prior to that, we put a survey out, starting in the summer, and we had um oh wait, we had three hundred and thirty-three, not thirty-three responses, sorry, three hundred and thirty-three responses from faculty, staff, community, students. And we also utilized departmental outcome data from the previous strategic uh goals that were developed within each department each year, and what was met and what wasn't met. The teams reviewed all of that. All of this information came back to the steering committee, which was the executive officers. We reviewed the materials that was presented. We made some recommendations to the teams, some minor changes, and even some recommendations went back, and the teams reconvened. The teams actually met on um February twenty-first for the first time. That was our kickoff. After that, they met individually, but after the executive team reviewed it, they went back. A few of them had to go back and look at what we did, because once we brought them all together, all the the results, we saw that there was some duplication and some overlap, so they went back and the teams worked together. Here are the people that participated, and um we're going to be recognizing these people at a three o'clock uh meeting after the board meeting, uh recognize the work they did, and unveiling the final versions after you see it today. These were the four students that participated, and we hope that that some of them will show up this afternoon and and get uh recognized for the work they did. So this was our old mission. Central Texas College provides accessible and quality educational opportunities. that support a diverse student population and promote student success, completion, and employability. The new recommended mission for your approval will be, Central Texas College provides accessible, equitable, and quality educational opportunities that promote student success, completion, and employability. That's what the recommendation is. The vision was, Central Texas College serves our diverse global community through engaging and innovative education. The new vision for the college will be, Central Texas College's vision is to be a leader in providing innovative academic, technical, continuing, and adult education to our diverse global community to meet student and workforce needs. The values, we kept all of our values, we believe in our values, we didn't feel we needed to change the ones that were existing. However, we wanted to include a new value, inclusive learning and work environments. It's part of the values of the institution. So our strategic priority one, remained the same, enhance student success. And under that, goals were modified slightly. The new goals will be increase completion rates for credit and non-credit students, enhance services and processes to promote student success, promote effective communication strategies to enhance student engagement and success. Priority two was modified considerably. It's now foster growth and improvement of instructional programs, technology, and learning environments. And under that priority, the goals are implement and evaluate efficient and relevant instructional programs and delivery methods, continuously monitor and assess enrollment, transfer, and employment trends to drive student success. Priority three remained the same, continuous assessment and improvement of operations and services. However, some of the goals were modified. Improve internal and external communications, remove barriers to enrollment, support efficient use of technology and applications. Uh, that was it. Priority four remained the same, modernize, improve, and expand infrastructure and facilities. For, the new goal is provide secure and reliable high-speed network services, and you can understand why. Enhance physicals, campus environment, and accessibility. Ensure functionality of optimal teaching and learning space. And ensure workspaces are conducive to productivity. And priority five, support and serve our global community. Hello? Come on, okay. Promote CTC's mission and values through community outreach. Support and power appreciate employees in order to meet ongoing changing needs. Continue to seek and evaluate opportunities to offer programs worldwide, and identify, cultivate, develop, and maintain relationships with stakeholders. Those are the priorities, the goals, and now we just want to get to work. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention three other people that were very, very important to the process. Dr. Carrie Rose, she's here, our dean of institutional accountability and curriculum support, and her team, as well as Jose Lozano, who works for her, he was instrumental on the survey results. And my assistant, Gilda Pintup, she put all this together for us. So um, I appreciate your review of it, and hopefully next week you will approve our new plan for our future. Thank you.
Before you go away, are there any questions?
Yes, oh yes, any questions?
Appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, extremely hard work.
Thank you, one thing I just forgot. Um, in the process of this approval, you'll be also reviewing document three oh four um, that Deb Havens will be updating, cause that includes the strategic plan.
Well, I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
You put in the word, remove barriers from enrollment. How in the world can that be a strategic plan? If we got a barrier to enrollment, we eliminate it right on the spot, that's your job. We don't want barriers for enrollment. So what, what are we talking about here?
Well, there, there are so, several things that come up for, that are, that could be a barrier for certain students. And as we encounter them, we look at them, evaluate them.
I don't wanna get, now this is specific stuff, there's here. If we got barriers that are under our roof, why do they exist?
That's why it's a goal to remove anything we, we encounter and we find.
What have we encountered that we haven't removed?
Can you give us an example?
I don't understand, if I come here to register for class, and you got a barrier that I can't get through, why is it there?
Oh goodness, let me, let me think of something that, that's happened that we've had to, to work on. You could put me on the spot here. Um, well, you know, when we, when we look at the advising, um, you know, in the past, we went ahead and removed the need to require an advising appointment. We felt that that was a barrier to enrollment, that students couldn't get enrolled quick enough. Now we're, now we're encountering that, that has also put up barriers, because students don't understand what they need to do to be, to get enrolled effectively and to complete a program. So that might be a barrier that we need to address moving forward. We may need to bring back the requirement of advising. That's just something that comes to mind from the Texas Pathways Institute that we were out at last week. Um, there's sometimes are, are barriers because of time constraints, where a student um, is working on getting their TA, and they don't have it right away, and, and that's a barrier for them. So we have to help them get the, get that to, or we have to help them get financial aid. There's things that we need to do as an institution to speed processes up, to help students get enrolled in a timely manner. So there's lots of things that we can continue to work on as far as barriers. Just coming up with a couple of them.
Well, to this old soldier, a barrier is some physical dimension, be it a minefield, a bar-bar fence, or a machine gun, that's something that you can eliminate when you see it. So that's why I'm confused. If we're, if we're concerned about strategic planning, if there's a barrier to a child coming here to register for class, why does it exist? That's what we pay you guys for, to eliminate that when you see it on the spot.
Well, there's some barriers that we can't eliminate. You know, there's some things that, that the state has implemented that we can't eliminate, like TSI testing, and things that, that require students to do, um, residency requirements, things like that, things that we have to do, but we can't. Those are barriers we cannot eliminate.
Do we have a residential requirement?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we
Well, I just charge you more tuition if you don't live in our counties that we tax.
But that could be a barrier to someone affording to come. You know, you could talk about affordability.
They have to pay it.
I think we're all saying the same thing.
That's not a barrier. That's, that's the rules and regulations, that if you don't live in the counties that we tax, and you have to pay extra money to come here. If you're gonna take the aviation program, it's gonna cost you extra money because we have to pay for the flight hours.
Right.
That's not a barrier, that's part of the program.
It is a barrier to some students, because they can't afford it, and that's, the barriers that
We can't eliminate that, though. See, that's, that's what I'm talking about. I cannot waive the requirement for you to have to have so many hours behind the stick to fly an airplane.
That's right.
That's a barrier. But I can't eliminate that, so therefore, it's something that we can't fix. We got to accommodate the student to fly the airplane.
So you're suggesting we change?
I want you to find, define barrier a little bit better. I don't like that as, as being a strategic thing.
Well, that was, that was actually um, the same one that we had before. We just had, we, yeah, we had it, we didn't have eliminate, we had remove.
I read what you had here, but you added, highlighted, which means it's a new word.
One, one word, the eliminate was, was highlighted. The barrier was still there, it was in our pre, previous strategic plan.
Not, not sure that, that, that that's conducive to, to what we're trying to do strategic wise. But anyway, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands. If you, as a member of this organization, find something that keeps a student from coming here, and you don't eliminate it, shame on you.
Well, I think what we're saying to ourselves is, we identify, we, we, we recognize that, and that's gonna happen, and we do eliminate those barriers. So this, using that student as an example that lives outside of, of our area, wants to come to school here but can't afford it, that's a barrier. We find a way around that to get that student here.
But that's not eliminating a barrier, that's accommodating a student. Go to the CTC Foundation and say, we need student tuition assistance for this, this child, or whatever. That's, that's accommodating people, not eliminating barriers. Okay, now that, the second word I've got a problem with is, when you run us on up, we're talking about a global community. And I realize we've used that word before, but I'm not sure that it's really applicable to what we do here.
That was a lot of discussion on that topic.
The word global doesn't resonate with my taxpayers.
We serve people.
We serve the taxpayers of Bell and Corial County. That's who we serve, that's who pays the taxes. So if I'm paying taxes for somebody in Uzbekistan to come to college here, uh, that doesn't resonate very well. So when you say global, I'm, I'm thinking something outside our immediate service area.
Well, CTC has been a global
Well, we had contracts. They weren't global, they were specific with specific United States military organizations, which is part of our, our total community. It's not global. Global to me is, is something outside our influence, that's some other taxing entity. That's the United Kingdom, I mean, we don't owe them anything. I, I'm just saying, the word global is just, doesn't kind of fit, I don't think, in, in Texas politics, so that's.
So do you have anything to add to that?
No, we looked, we looked at that, and there were, there were two schools of thought. One is what you're talking about, and the other one was keep it in there, because we do want to maintain a, a look, a global look at what we do. There may be things in the future that we don't want, so, so we want to have that global look. It doesn't mean that, it has anything to do with taxpayers, because we're not paying taxes, they're not paying taxes, they're outside of that, so they would come here and pay the higher tuitions or whatever. So that's not how we're looking at it. We're looking at it as a, it's a, it's just, it's a different look for us that we want to maintain a, a presence, a global look, a global presence. It's not that we're actually doing anything right now. We, we still have some programs that are outside of Texas.
Yeah, I understand, and I see the ballot sheet on it all the time, and it gets worse and worse every time we look at it.
No, no.
So, uh, I don't know.
I think we should be specific to the central Texas area. Like Jenna was saying, we have Coppersco ISD and Kalina ISD taxpayers that pay property taxes to our college, and we should represent them.
We do.
Forget about everybody else, concentrate on the people who live in those portions of Corial County and Bell County that we represent. And we, we, we need to take care of them, and then their families, and make sure that they're prepared to go to college, come to college, our college, and then transfer out to a four-year university. That's what we need to concentrate on.
And we do a good job of it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we do, bring the delight.
Uh, interpretation of global is that we're not hidebound by central Texas, because we want to go find other students that will pay the tuition that we demand, and it will help the taxpayers of central Texas. That's my, the way I view it.
Yeah, that's the future. It's however you, I mean, all of us have an opinion on it, and it's, it, whatever we wanna, whatever we want to adopt, but the global had nothing to do with specifically paying taxes or tuition or any of that stuff. It's a global look that we want, not just central Texas. I mean, it, so that was, that was, that came from the committee.
And our tagline is for students of the real world.
Yeah, I mean
Well, I understand students of the real world, and I like that phrase, but globalism smacks of communism, and that's something that, that I can't, I can't focus on.
Where do we go from here?
Let's take a look at it. Let's, let's, let's visit that again before we vote on it.
Thank you.
I'd hate wordsmithing, but that word just sticks them across.
Thank you, sir.
Well, let me say that, you know, uh, Mr. Weaver and, what's your name?
Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, uh, have a point, a point, but it's not the point. The point is, you did a great job, and it's helpful, and if we wanted to look at those words, we can. But uh, it's very good. Thank you.
Hello.
And next item is the foundation update, and Ms. Pazin is already here.
Yes, I'm ready. Good afternoon. And I wanted just to go over some foundation progress and highlights and update you on what we are doing. We're doing some amazing things in the foundation. So just giving you, going over the background, um, we're at our thirty-first year in the foundation. We have fifteen active board members. We've added five additional scholarship events that we created in twenty twenty-three, and ten of those additional charters have been created um, in a six-month period. So the value of those are forty-five thousand eight hundred dollars currently. So, and we will be increasing those um, at a higher rate, because we've got some donors that we are sitting down and discussing some options with. Moving on to our scholarship application period, uh, the portal opened this year November first. In previous years, it hadn't opened until January fifteenth. And I thought that it would be a great idea to try to increase the application process, so that's why we elected to open the portal a little bit sooner. It closes February twenty-eighth, and in spring of twenty twenty-four, I am happy to announce that we're gonna try to open the application process for an additional portal for spring scholarships. So that funding is gonna come from our annual golf tournament. So we'll just pick that up a little bit more and try to award as many scholarships as possible. Um, I'm predicting that we can probably add to that an additional forty scholarships for the spring semester. Moving on to scholarship opportunities, oh, it's not showing up. Well, I can just go, oh, there you go, two hundred and twenty-five plus scholarships are available, and that's a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar annual award. We operate with an endowment of eleven million. And I say two hundred and twenty-five scholarships, because in addition to those opportunities that we have, we have the Wolf Warrior, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Homeschool Scholarships, which make up an excess of uh, ten scholarships, fifteen scholarships, twenty-five scholarships. It just depends on what that board is recommending for that, that given year. Our current application process platform is on award spring, and this is our second year being on that platform. It's working very efficiently for us, and uh, we've had no problems um, with the scoring, reviewing, awarding, all of those things that come along with those scholarships. On the reviewing process aspect, uh, we had thirty reviewers that came from faculty and staff as far as volunteering their time, and we're very appreciative for that. Uh, each of those reviewers were responsible for fifty applications, and um, we couldn't have done it without them. I mean, that was a true tremendous help um, to try to get all of those applications screened and processed in a month's timeframe. Our scholarship awarding um, is in the process now, and all of the awards have gone out to the recipients, and the um, award um, invitations have also gone out. So the award reception is going to be held Thursday, May fourth, from five thirty to probably approximately seven PM. The reception starts at five thirty, and then the ceremony starts at six. And so hopefully, all of you have received your invitations for that event as well. And on the thank you letters, um, each of the donors will receive a personalized thank you letter. Um, it will highlight what their area of study is, and then a personal note that they have sent into the foundation that we are sending to the donors, so that they know who the recipient is and how valued they are as far as their donation to our foundation. Well, also, going back, I'm sorry, um, on the reception evening, we're going to be honoring um, some of our sponsors for the twenty twenty-two year. We had sixty-two sponsors that helped us with different foundation fundraisers last year. On our scholarship applications, I kind of did a little overview of what we were looking at as far as receiving those applications. So I didn't have any data on twenty twenty. Um, in twenty twenty-one, it looks like we received six hundred and sixty-four applications for scholarships. In twenty-two, it increased, um, opening that portal a little bit sooner, up to nine hundred and ninety-nine. And this year, we saw nine hundred and thirty-five applicants as far as submissions. Um, these are just some of the areas of studies that some of our scholarships cover, and it's much more, and it's getting broader um, as far as like us seeking out the donors and trying to narrow down specifically what they want or what they um, desire to do to assist students. On engagements and opportunities, um, of course teamwork is key, and we do and we do a very, very good job, as you, all the presentations that were presented today. Everyone does an amazing job to assist our students. We have worked closely with the aviation department this year, kinesiology. We're hosting an event with them, or co-hosting. It's going to be a 5K along with a community field day. It's going to be on May 4th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We've been working with the culinary arts department. They want to do an event in June, so we're planning that project. The planetarium, we're working with them on a project. Dual credit, we're working toward a possible bowling tournament in the Lampasses area. And then our purse bingo, that's a new one that we're going to start up this year. College for Kids, the lighting of the bell tower, we're doing the tree farm in conjunction this year with the lighting of the bell tower, and all of the trees that we sell to the donors are going toward College for Kids. And I'll talk a little bit more about that and what we're going to span with that whole opportunity. Recruitment, we've been attending presentations with them. I'm going out to the local high schools and just kind of pitching the scholarships and the opportunities that we have here at CTC. And another community engagement that we recently did, we went to Union Grove Middle School, and we spoke to 800 middle schoolers. So that was a lot of fun, just to kind of encourage them to come out, and that college for them is an opportunity, and here at CTC is the place they need to be. So that, and then the principal also invited us back August 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00. It's a career and field day and a whole experience for them. So their elementary school, which is across the street, Mountain View Elementary, along with the middle school, block off the entire space, and they have approximately 1,000 to 1,500 people that come out for that evening, parents, children, all kinds of people, and so we've been invited back to come and do that, just kind of encourage them and information for CTC. On our fundraising, last year, we did two events. So we did the annual golf tournament and then lighting of the bell tower, which was a huge success, and our total was $37,750. Now, this was good, but we wanted to be great, so we wanted to expand our opportunities this year. So with 2023, so far, we are in the golf tournament phase. Friday is our annual golf tournament, and we're looking really good. We've actually increased that number there. Community Field Day is May the 4th. We have Treasure Wars. Treasure Wars is a new event that we have teamed up with Texas A&amp;M, their foundation, and we're going to have a joint scholarship called the Eagle Warrior, and our goal is $30,000, and they also have a donor that is willing to match that amount. So we will have a really nice set aside amount for scholarships for those two programs. Designer Bingo, that's also a new one that we're going to bring to our area, and we've got a lot of ladies that are on that committee, and they're super excited to get all of their friends to come out and raise some funds for CTC. And then our airport dedication, we're working with Abe on that, and that is set for October 19th if everything goes according to plan. And I really hope that you can come out and join us for that. That's going to be a spectacular evening. And then lighting of the bell tower, once again, we're going to start that November 30th is when it's going to be hosted this year. And going back to the Storage Wars, I don't know if you've ever seen Texas Storage Wars? That's what it's a feed off of. Ricky and Bubba out of Lampasses, they're going to be our auctioneers. So it's going to be a lot of fun, and we're going to have a good time and also going to raise some funds for that event. On the lighting of the bell tower, the trees that we'll be selling, they're $100 per donor, and all of that money is going to go back into College for Kids. And we're going to try to stem the program off or spin the program off into a junior alumni. So that's kind of what our thoughts are. So moving into the future and what all of the kids are kind of apt to understand, and you know, everybody is apt to understand QR codes. So I did a tutorial on YouTube and found out how to build these on Adobe. And so I started with the foundation QR code, and we placed it on the back of our opportunity cards. And so when we go out in the public or we go out to schools, we just kind of have them scan the QR code, and then that gets them into our portal, and then they can go ahead and apply straight from there. Then you don't even have to go to our website or anything like that. It takes them directly to our portal for scanning. Same with the golf tournament. They can just scan to register on there to join that. And then lighting of the bell tower, that just gave them information too. So it just makes it simpler, and we use, we utilize these and feature these on our email correspondence, on the bottom of my signature blog, and then on social media. We're posting those all over. So that's kind of what we've done with the QR codes. Another portion of the foundation is the Eagles Nest Pantry, and this was established to assist central Texas college students with food insecurities. This just gives you some background on what we do as far as the inventory for the pantry with the HEB on Tremere. I put in my request as far as what we need to order. They facilitate everything and count all the quantity for me. We load up the vehicle, and we bring it back to the pantry. Of course, we have to track all of it. And then they are a great partner, as you know, HEB. They support every one of our events. So, and we team up with them on other projects that they're doing in the community as well as what we're doing here. So I, my hat is off to HEB. It's my HEB as well. Ways that you can give. So planned gifts are just like for donors. They can give monthly or annually. Direct donations are like the drop-offs that they can bring to our office, or they bring them to the actual box, you know, where we have the food pantry at. Department drives, that has been, seen an increase this year. And in March, we actually had a fundraising effort that was hosted by Facilities, Construction, and Planning Department, and it was super successful, and I'm very grateful for them to take the time out of their busy schedule to be able to facilitate that for us. Community food drives that we've started working with, early college high school, they have some student projects that they want to kind of build on as far as a learning experience. So they have contacted us on how we can assist them, and we've kind of helped them with their whole, I guess you wouldn't call it a business plan, but like a financial plan, on how to establish a food drive, what it's going to take, what's the consistency on it, when you have to purchase, who you give to, that kind of thing. So it's been really rewarding for both our staff and for early college high school students. Great Western, we do the Giving Campaign every year, and you know, they're excellent as well of always assisting us. And then the United Way, we have that as a branch for United Way for people to donate specifically to our food pantry, so they can put that on their designation list. And then as far as the alumni, so Alumni Association is also growing. We started, we created the quarterly newsletters, and those go out to all of our alumni. And how we gather that data is we get it from graduations. So they fill out a little card for us, and then we get like their contact information on their email and their phone number, and then where, you know, they feel like they're going to be headed, what degree plan that they were on. So we're keeping all of that data, and we're contacting them through that quarterly newsletter. Annual Distinguished Alumni Celebration is going to be hosted in August this year, and so we're actively working on that too. So, and we have the applications listed online, so anybody can apply for those opportunities. And the establishment, like I was speaking of earlier, about the Junior Alumni Program. So we thought it would be a great idea to start at the elementary school level with the whole implanting of Central Texas College is your hometown college. And we wanted to, with the College for Kids, if they fulfill a certain amount of courses that they take with us, then they become a junior alumni. So that would be a T-shirt, maybe a little backpack or something. We haven't completely arranged the entire program, but they could go into their elementary schools with a little CTC Junior Alumni T-shirt. And you know how everyone's like, oh, how'd you get that? I want one. So everyone's going to want to come out to the program so they can be a junior alumni at CTC. Alumni Festival, we're hosting that in May of 2024, so we're in the planning process of that. And then the graduation penning, that's super exciting for us as far as the foundation to know that they're getting ready to walk across that stage, and we proudly give them a foundation pin so that they can tell everybody that, you know, they just graduated from Central Texas College and be proud of that. A discount card program, we're working with local restaurants that they can provide CTC students only a discount, say 10% or $5 off their meal or whatever every time they present that card at their restaurant. So we're teaming up with area restaurants here on Clear Creek to see if we can do that. And then just some added value perks for the campus. Maybe possible if they pay for a membership, you know, for the alumni, $20, that they can go and utilize the gym or the library access. We still have a lot of details that we have to work out with that, you know, with different people. And that is kind of the foundation in a nutshell. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
You're doing a good report.
Oh, thank you. I'm having a great time. I really am. So I'm enjoying it very much.
Thank you for November 30th, because my anniversary is the next day. You wouldn't see me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'll be there November 30th.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate you, Miss Pazin. Item number eight is the Great Western Dining Contract Renewal. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'll be seeking board approval to exercise the third option year of the Great Western Dining Contract. As you are aware, Great Western Dining is Central Texas College's exclusive provider of dining and catering services. And according to the terms of the contract, board plan rates are adjusted by the Consumer Price Index. And I just want to add to that because I didn't have this piece in your packet. It's the food away from home line item. And so currently, or in February, that inflation rate was 8.2%. So that will equate to a $1.88 increase. What I do want to share is even though I just stated 8.2%, currently it's at 8.8. And so in January, it was 8.4, February, 8.2, March, 8.8. So we kind of landed there, and we're able to get the best rate arguably per the terms of the contract. This will equate to roughly a $1.88 increase. And the recommendation that I'll be bringing is, from the CTC administration, is to approve the third option year for the Great Western Dining Services contract with an end date of August 31st, 2024. I can answer any questions.
No questions, and we'll go to item number nine, which is residence hall rate increase. And again, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you again, members of the board. As provided in your packets, I'll be seeking board approval to increase the room and board rates for fiscal year 2324 as follows. The proposed rates for fall '23 and '24 will be for a double occupancy. That'll move from $2,740 to $2,985. Single occupancy will move from 3160 to 3405, obviously with your approval. The summer rates for 2024 proposed will be for the double occupancy from $1,725 to $1,915. Single occupancy from $1,925 to $2,115. The total, these total increases equate to, for fall and spring, the total increase is $245. And then for the summer, we're looking at an increase of $190. As you can see the graph above, we are red. We are still very affordable. And so we are moving in the right direction as far as being equally competitive from a price, but do consider that when you look at this graph, the markets, so McLennan is the market, rental market there has gone through the roof. And in the case of McLennan Community College, for example, they don't actually have dorms. They work with other apartment complexes nearby. Independence Place here in Colleen, you look at that, it's much more expensive. However, when you look at the amenities and what exactly the person's getting for a studio apartment or apartment comparable to what we have, you can kind of then understand the differences. So we are affordable, yet we're not giving away, so to speak. And so I'm happy to answer any additional questions, if there are.
No questions? Okay. And we'll move on to item number 10, which is Casablanca Travel Contract Renewal. And again, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. I'll be seeking board approval to exercise the third option period of the contract with Casablanca Travel Services. If you'll recall, Casablanca Travel Services was originally selected using a formal bid process. Overall, the administration is satisfied with the level of services provided by Casablanca Travel Services. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
And again, I'll be bringing all three of those items for board approval next week. Thank you.
Item number 11 is the Enrollment Center Elevation Contract, and that's Mr. Harmson.
Good afternoon. Howdy. The Braun and Butler Construction, they are currently the construction manager at risk. They have submitted to us upon our request a guaranteed maximum price for the Enrollment Center Elevator Edition. If you remember, the elevator addition is part of the Small Capital Projects Package, which includes renovations of several other buildings, the Nursing Center, Protective Services, the Library, Science Center, et cetera. I won't go into the background around the construction manager at risk method that was approved by the board that was in the packet. The guaranteed maximum price for the Enrollment Center Elevator Edition is $817,578. That price includes $25,000 in contractor contingency allowance as well as $40,000 in other allowances for unknown conditions. Most of the time, in the past, whenever I brought a project forward, we would have a level of contingency, and that usually it's 10%. This amount actually represents a little less than that. So we separated this from the rest of the other small capital projects because it was in alignment with the budget. The budget for this particular project was estimated $800,000. And then delaying would certainly result in higher construction costs due to inflation and then overall rising prices. And then if you remember, several years ago, we actually went out with a separate bid for this particular project, which came in at $800,000. So the pricing, I think, that we're getting here is certainly within line. And we believe that, working with the contractor, we should be able to go ahead and bring it in below the $817,000. I do need to go ahead and at least provide a quick update as well on the overall project, the Small Capital Projects Package. That package included the Welcome Center, the Police Department, the File Room, and a couple other locations. Unfortunately, when we got some of the pricing back from Braun and Butler, we were a little over $2 million over what we had budgeted for this fiscal year. And so we're going to have to delay some of that work for a future fiscal year. PPK is currently working, and I included the list. I won't, I can answer any questions about it, but I included the list of projects that PPK is currently working on. That remaining scope comes to around $3.4 million, which is still about $250,000 over budget. But I think that as PPK continues to complete the construction drawings, I think that'll come into, I think we'll be able to bring that price down. The other thing too is the contractor, because they didn't know how many projects we were going to move forward with, included some redundancy for general conditions. So as we group multiple projects together, a number of the dollars within the general conditions will come down. And so I certainly think that we'll be able to bring and cut down that remaining difference. The current lead time for the project is roughly 23 to 24 weeks. Once the project has been approved, they would anticipate a start date in October, and then we would look at wrapping it up sometime at the end of December, beginning of January. So with that, we'll be bringing forward a recommendation to move forward with the elevator addition project at the $817,578. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Harmson? That's a good job you did on the package. I appreciate that. No other questions? Thank you, sir. Item number 12 is the Board Resolution Support for the Texas Commission on Community College Finance Recommendations. This was a report put together by the Community College Association of Texas trustees, and they've been working, then in Austin, behind the scenes with the Texas Commission of Higher Education subcommittees to put forth some recommendations for the legislature, which is in session, to support community college funding this year. That document is there. It's just a resolution with the horos and waivers, and you can read it yourself. But basically, it says that we need the legislature to support community colleges. Bottom line is, we'll be asking for a vote on that next week. And item number 13 is the Recommendation Topics for Upcoming Agenda Items or Announcements, and I'll start with Mr. Armstrong.
None this time, sir. Thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Yeah?
Nothing.
Announcement for the regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 25th, 2023 at 1:30 PM. And that's because we have the Eagle Awards Boy Scout Ceremony that starts at noon before that. So you're all invited. So you're all invited to that.
Thank you.
We've got tables bought, so everybody's got a seat to show up for lunch, right?
Debbie's got the list.
Okay, Debbie's got the list. Blame it on Debbie if you don't have a seat.
Always.
And that's a good program. It supports one of our CTC graduates, and I'm glad to see that. Abdi Siani, he's also the Central Chapter of Texas.
Casa.
Aid to the Secretary of the Army, I think.
Casa, he's a cousin.
Yeah, Casa, yeah.
Civilian aid Secretary of the Army.
He's a good guy. And we also have a workshop scheduled for May 16th at 1:00 p.m., and that'll be kickoff for our voting for next year. At this moment in time, I'd like to call the board into an executive session to discuss personnel issue.